I have called order the final commission regular meeting of June 7, 2016. Roll call.
San Rosado.
Burton. McCoy here.
Strube here.
Buckle's here.
The records show that Commissioners Spahn and Natali are not here. Yep. We stand for a moment of silence.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any further comments? Agenda? Anybody want to make a change to the agenda? I do. I want to add an item to new business to reschedule next meeting. I have asked for a guess that we've... Because I'm doing business for the sixth. Does anybody have an issue with that? Well, we'll talk about it when we get to that point. Yeah, okay. All in favor? Any votes?
Natali.
No problem. We added to this, added an element, an item to the agenda to discuss the possibility of discussion next meeting.
Thank you, Sally.
Anybody got any feedback on the minutes?
One minor item on page one under reports. Larry DeGrae reported either reported the following or reported that. So he either believed that or believed the following.
Okay. Any comments? Any last comments? Any notes? Yes? Do I motion proof the minutes as well?
I made a motion to approve.
Yes? Go ahead. I missed calling it already.
I'm sorry.
It's all right. One second. Sorry. All in favor? Any votes? So carry. Reports.
Thank you, Chairman. Reports this month pretty much speak for themselves. Just by way of an update, we don't have any further information on the start date, on the number five, on the start date for the next day of the Federal Harbor Ridge project. You will get your half year up in the annual report, that's the live meeting, fifth or otherwise. And public hearing on number eight, public hearing on a variance to off-street parking received for the next phase of the Petri Canes development on the south side of Mason Avenue, Conqueror Drive, on the Wilbilly supermarket. So that public hearing and meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, the fifteenth at ten o'clock. And that's all I've got. Happy to entertain any questions.
Any questions?
Old business. Okay. Five A, first of the old business is the proposed text amendment to section three point eight D, Article Three of the zoning ordinance about the design and construction standards for new construction in the commercial three district. The proposed new, well, the proposed new text is as follows. All new development shall conform to the commercial design and construction standards required for commercial development within the town's historic district overlay. Period. So, and we comment or discussion, revision of that, I'm happy to entertain. It's a text amendment to the zoning ordinance, so we still have to pass a public hearing.
Any comments? Questions? I think it's pretty clear. Do I have a motion to move?
So moved.
Well, this is just to give authority to send the council a word.
Right, because we just gave a summary of what we talked about the last week.
Right, exactly. All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? So carry.
Thank you, Chairman. The next one is text amendment on the proposed inclusion of dog pens as a permit of use in the residential one district. So that would be second three two V eight of the Article Three zoning ordinance. But it would also need a definition. Definitions are in Article Two, section two point nine. And the definition is as follows. The definition is based on some of the conversation that this board has had, this commission's had, as well as some language that's taken directly from the old proposed chicken coop, backdoor chickens, as well as some language off of the city of Suffolk ordinance that was provided two years ago, or a year ago. And for the benefit of the ordinance, it reads as follows. Definition of a dog pen. Dog pen, and we're not talking about dog house, we're talking about dog pen. Dog pen means any structure used to enclose and confine domestic canines outside of the principal building or structure on a lot. Pens shall be located only in the rear yard and in accordance with the town's zoning regulations. Pens shall be designed to provide the canines with shelter from the elements of nature and constructed in such a manner as to not cause injury to the animal or interfere with movement, vision, or respiration. Pens shall be in a clean, dry, and sanitary condition at all times. Animal's, animal waste shall not be allowed to accumulate. That is the definition of the pen.
How does this apply to pre-existing pens that are not in the back?
No pre-existing. First of them, pre-existing.
By any. I understand.
Is there more?
No, there, well, okay. What I'm thinking of is specifically...
No grandfather, no, no.
What I'm thinking is a pre-existing condition in Bay Creek, in the pud.
What did you say?
Pre-existing condition in the pud, in Bay Creek.
What's the pre-existing condition?
The fence is already there. It's already, it's already constructed. It's been there for ten or twelve years.
But, I mean, does this apply to this or not?
It's on the side, that was the question. It's not in the back. This was specifically, this stated to be in the rear yard.
Which was from the P D report.
I understand, I understand. That's, that's why I'm raising the concern because it's still within, it was constructed.
Yeah, we gotta get into, I think we're gonna get into a... I have no problem with that as long as they are dealing with clean, dry, all the above, other than the location.
As it turns out now, the owner doesn't count for dogs. Add dogs, add fence.
Well, then I'd say just let it go. And if they get another dog to, I mean, sorry, too bad. It'd be a pain in the ass, but you know what? This is actually...
It's gonna be his challenge because he's gotta reconcile what we do here to what the pud is.
Yeah. Well, how much should we say to me on the pud?
I'm sorry?
How much should we say to me on the pud? Because that's, that surrounds.
Mm-hmm, right.
It surrounds anything.
Right, that's, exactly.
Probably has a town. Anything that happens over there, we don't really have a good picture. On the pud says.
Well, we have, we have no direct influence. We have indirect influence because it's his charge to reconcile what we do through the town with what the pud does. Just to keep it consistent and for no other reason than for health and safety.
Well, if we include sidecar, I think we'll be all right because if you do it for the historic district, there are no sidecar problems.
Or the lock sign.
Not that big, maybe five feet of the other property.
That's not a standard lock sign.
Yeah, it is, sure.
Where many of that are double locks?
Yeah, you've got double, you've got double locks. We've got houses that are on two locks.
We have, I have a side.
Yours. You've got a sidecar, but you've got, where your house is built. You've got a, you've got a zoning from your wall to the property line by the...
By the...
You can't, well, put it this way, I think we should propose it to be a setback off the property line if it's a sidecar. That would kill it.
I think we're getting...
It sure will.
Yeah, that would kill it.
Absolutely will.
What I'm getting at is, I mean, we've got, see, the, the houses are built over in Bay Creek are built to modern standards, which doesn't generally mean that they're gonna be long in era like the lock we have in the store.
I'm with you on that. What I'm saying, like, when we were talking about the chickens, that didn't apply.
Like, Bay Creek did. Bay Creek does allow them, period.
Okay, so they have their own rules based on that sort of thing. So I think we're getting sidetracked based on that, some obscure issue of Bay Creek.
I understand the state of Virginia, the state of Virginia. It's a pud ordinance of the state of Virginia. Has nothing to do with Bay Creek. Bay Creek is a pud and the state of Virginia. So it's totally different.
It's fine. They have their own rules.
Correct. And they have, their state of laws, and they're actually worse in most cases than the historic district.
Why would you say that? From the rear yard. But what I'm confused, I'm confused about is, are we encouraging dog pens? I thought we were discouraging dog pens. Thought we wanted to get away from, I think, from tatters and dog pens in this town. That was, I mean, because if we're gonna encourage you dog pens, who's gonna police this?
Reasons came up, was because of the pictures that were brought to us a couple of months ago about a dog that was in a wire chain linked fence that was put on a building to, I only saw one, but whatever, that was actually standing out on the ground with his fence in the slow water. And that was the issue. It doesn't have any dry ground for you to stand on, and that was considered being a user. This will take care of that. Will it not?
If it conforms to all the zoning regulations, strictly speaking, it needs to come and get a zoning clearance as well. If that's not done, then its grounds go even. Whether it's either be removed or coming to get a zoning clearance, you know, for inspection and back. Same thing we did with the shag. And in that regard, that would object to anything like any other accessory, any other accessory of.
Okay.
Or any accessory use.
So...
Because I think part of the issue is we were told that the animal officer or animal control couldn't enforce the kind of conditions that those other dogs will adhere to. If there's at least a town requirement that it be kept, and again, clean, dry, and sanitary is...
And that's probably more important.
I don't see a beholder, but at least I can show photos of something that's not clean and dry.
Right, right.
Yeah, I'd rather have that.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd rather have that than a dog sitting in the backyard stuck on a tether, chain, or whatever, that gets wrapped around something.
Right.
I am totally, I'm totally agree with that. But I'd rather be, at least we can go in there and report the dog standing in water, or it's a mud, mud, water, whatever. It's not dry. So the key word is dry. But I'd like that.
Okay. Well, we're back to tether law. I mean, we haven't existed tether law in the town code.
The town cares twelve hours, it's still in the...
Oh, really?
Yeah, it's not, because he said, she said. Always around there, it's like going out to park, I mean, we'll chop your dog's leg, and you sit there, you still sit in the town later. Yeah, it's impossible, of course. I just, I'd rather see a dry clean pen with no tether than, than tethering. Just let them set, because there's no way they're gonna keep dry because it's an open space.
Well, I'm calling for other counties that tethering laws. I mean, we...
No, no, what I'm getting at is, I'd rather see no tethering because there's no way to keep that area dry whatsoever. Because with that tethering, it's gonna really hit the dog.
Okay. Couldn't we just... A recommended ordinance that says no tethering of dogs anytime, period. That's it.
Or you could take the sucker's law unless you're with...
Invisible. If you're with, if it's visible to the inspector or something like that, that's it.
Yeah, because if, otherwise we run into the classic Dillon law. Because there's no, we can't make a law that doesn't exist, right?
We have to have permission to.
Correct. So right now, what sucker got around with it is how they got around that law was basically having a dog. If it's tethered, you have to be within, you have to be with, within the animal's proximity. You could be inside it, but you cannot leave a dog unattended and tethered.
Right.
The whole state of...
I think I read in there where it said, you, the person, has to be visible to the inspector or something like that, so that probably if somebody was, inspector was coming down the street, if they had such a thing, and there was unattended animal tethered, then that's a violation.
Because you run with the exact same problem with that as they did with that pen with the dry space and all that. Because it could be, the lead could be restricted, and it could be stuck in the same exact scenario.
Yeah.
Okay. So, is this where we put that, in the pen description, or we put that somewhere else?
Well, I mean, what's, what's, I guess we would go under the tethering ordinance, whatever number that has.
That's in the town code, not the zoning ordinance. That's a law.
I would prefer to see if we can change that.
Right.
One comment. At the beginning Larry said, not talking about dog houses, talking about dog pens, but dog houses aren't covered anywhere else.
That's correct, yeah.
And so this, a dog house would be an instance of a pen, I presume, in the absence of any other language, but it, but the requirement to keep it dry, I think, would, would mean you couldn't have a dog house, at least in, as it's classified, we understood as the thing with the open door or something. Is that correct?
See...
Maybe nobody does if you say that. There's a big indoor spot.
I see, and that, that, the dog house I would like to see grandfather because they're, you know, they're traditionally built as, as small, typically with a roof. Do people quite hot, they floor down, some roofs, some not. Some dirt is a grand, this is floor for the dog house. So, you know, in that situation, the canine more likely to be wet and muddy. Yeah, it is. But I think we all know from sort of lived experience that a dog house isn't necessarily meant to be, you know, an unpleasant confinement for the dog. It's typically a place where they go in outdoor doors, sleep there at night. This is more in response to the conditions of the photographs presented. I don't know that we have widespread concern in town about the condition of sort of traditional dog houses.
So will lead you to your new role to deal with the tethering?
All right. I'm sure it'll come right back your way.
That's fine, okay.
Really, you say we can something, but it's in the town code.
It's the town code. And it's, it follows same suit with the family county. And if you could make mention to the news and all the stuff that they go along. The local county is not nearly as bad as Eckman County. Eckman County is basically stuck back in the fifties. Three animals like dirt. At the time, they were starving dead and dying on chains.
At some point in time, though, we've gotta get this thing, we gotta, I mean, the whole idea is to get this in front of the town council. So what's the shortest route to doing that? How do we go about getting this in front of, passing anyone to the...
What did you say you got to add?
The, kidding, the, the...
Tether?
Tether. Modified and the, well, what I was talking about regarding these pens.
Well, the pens are our business, the tethering is the council's business.
It may not be the council's business. I don't know that it isn't within the purview of the planning commission to make a recommendation to council based on an issue that has come to our attention and a potential resolution. Are you a recommendation?
Or the recommendation?
We have the council to tell us. If we say, they can tell us to know if we make a recommendation.
Well, my recommendation is to give the entire dog words.
I don't really have much.
Yeah.
In the town code, other than the tethering, that's all it is.
Exactly. Or put in, in your dog words. Or put in.
Okay, so then what do we want to put something on our agenda to research that?
Well, why don't you ask the planner to add that to the agenda for next meeting, and let's move on with this issue.
At this point, so that we can then build from there.
Yep.
Okay.
And the discussion section here, it does suggest approving a recommendation or amendment to town council. So I think that's the action that's suggested. I mean, I think, at least from what I'm hearing, I think there's a consensus at least to address it. There really is. Now, from our standpoint, from the citizens' perspective, there's a, there's a lot of people that are not happy with the current or lack of ordinance. Mostly in the county, but at least if we can be the forefront and give them, give a way to go themselves or to build upon it, I think we can do a bit.
Can I make a motion that we move this forward to town council for public hearing and consideration?
One second.
Since no one wants to modify our definition, and I think it's fine.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? So carry. Okay. New business.
Chairman, we've done an application for conditional use for a bed and breakfast for the swimming pool applied from Randolph Avenue, which is in the R one district. As discussed in the report, can, bed and breakfast is by way of conditional use only in the R one. The application is complete as it stands. There's photos attached, as well as a plot plan that shows the footprints, proposed footprint of the swimming pool. This property is perhaps unique in the R one to the extent that it does provide for off-street parking, which would have to be met by way of, if it's allowed to be a bed and breakfast. So if there's any discussion, I think we tend to entertain any discussion. Otherwise, this needs to have a public hearing date set for the bed and breakfast as well as the swimming pool. The reason the swimming pool is in the first one, swimming pools typically, if it's just a residential only pool, would we bypass the, that would be a sort of flagrant, if it's conditional use, we're talking about swimming pools, basketball courts and tennis, and tennis courts, all within the same breath. So I would need to add as more institutional swimming pools, as opposed to a backyard swimming pool. But since this would be a residential use, but with a public component to it in the sense that people who are residing at the bed and breakfast, my understanding, would also have access to the swimming pool. So that in that regard, it's not just a backyard swimming pool. That's why the swimming pool is here, it's also as part of the conditional use.
Are there any hour, hour restrictions and stuff like that on, on something like that?
Typically, no.
I mean, could you be after eleven o'clock at night?
Well, yeah, no, no, it wouldn't.
And again, it's a conditional use, so those are, those are conditions that can be put on if it's determined that, again, the three requirements, that, or again, it doesn't, it's not a detriment to the neighborhood, things that form a comprehensive plan, etc. So to that extent, those are conditions that, when that decision is made, this fourth, this condition can recommend those.
Those conditions. Keep a line at Fifth Street and has a pool in those nine years. That line needs to be in there to have a pool.
Yeah, I mean, I, it sounds perfectly fine, I'm just saying, like, if neighbors are, well, just looking at this, it looks like it really doesn't matter too much, but...
What was this place before? Somebody was in Moore's share area.
That's my understanding.
Because if you look, it's like black asphalt, people look in there.
And this is gonna be in-ground or what?
No, it's foot print. It is in-ground, okay. African is here by the way. This place is. And as long as they have a little hot tub area.
I suspect they don't hit water when they're peeing.
They hit water? Come on. We put one, I want to work in discussion, over here next to Ock, the big, dark, cedar shaped house that's right on the bay. And that's a in-ground pool.
How deep is it?
What's deep?
Big deep.
It's right on... It filled up. Keep it down with the water that's in it. It was actually a firewood house pool. It was weird, because you weren't sitting on the water table. But the water actually tees it down, it actually tees it to the table, too.
The question I have is, the pool is not there now. And obviously, the answer is to the process of a public hearing where neighbors will have an opportunity to voice any concerns or support that they have. But is there, if this were to get approved, recommended approval to council, and council approved it, is there a timeout on when the pool could be built? Or is it open-ended?
That would be within terms of the conditional use.
So that's, if that were to go forward, that would be a recommendation that we might want to consider putting a timeout on.
Right, and the permits would, I mean, as we saw to us that in May, since it's not done, the permits expire anyway. So then it starts the process all over again. So bed and breakfast, notwithstanding, the pool that doesn't materialize, which is a certain point in the calendar where any approval is all voided anyway. So we're still on that, we're back square. The applicant is aware of the alarming and fencing requirements of a pool. We had that conversation as well with the building official. Who would have to do the inspection on the electrical alarm system associated with that pool, residential pool.
After coming on, if you use, sure is my...
Well, it's, it's, it's code. Even, even the owner's house, we have to do it. Soon as you open that gate, the alarm goes off.
My pool in Maryland was connected to my house, so my, all my exterior doors leading to the pool area inside the house had to be alarmed. I don't know what it's like down here, but...
I would say act for when I'm thrilled, or I am, that would be a beer.
Yeah, that's great.
Absolutely.
Yeah, you mentioned this, but number six isn't checked, is there, is there a reason for that?
The ownership is on a tax bill, which is attached. It's actually the back of that thing.
It should be checked, right?
It should be checked.
Yeah, on Larry, or my comments and stuff are not, I'm not in favor of this. I think it's a great idea, but also, you know, we want to try to help these people identify someone, students and stuff like that. It's really, my comments really...
The upside is off-street parking, that they have already have available, there's gonna be a...
Huge, it's a sign.
Huge parking, huge.
That's a big deal.
The other thing, just about this property, it is a property that backs up to the commercial residential district, where bed and breakfasts can be by rights. So that's what it's worth. It's not in the middle of a public R one where bed and breakfasts are not, are not unknown. This property can, by zoning ordinance, have another bed and breakfast right behind it, and that would be by rights. So at least it's contiguous to the district where bed and breakfast by rights is... I believe that's all I need to say. I've got a public hearing date.
Any other questions? Issues, concerns? Issues, concerns?
That's Sunday. Yeah, we could have that, yeah, I mean, please, yeah. What he said, that in the past, we've been recommending, and we have been supporting joint hearings with town council, which leads up the process.
Yeah.
So do we need a motion to send this to a joint meeting with the town council? For a public hearing? Does the council? I make a motion, we have a joint public hearing with the town council.
Aye.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor? Any opposed?
Yes.
So carry it. Hold on my line here, guys. I was supposed to.
Tea room, uh?
Uh, the tea room, and in the interest of full disclosure, I lived at this house for thirteen months, and I can attest that it is in fact a single-family residential ranch home, vinyl clad, nineteen seventies era. But it is in the commercial residential district, where commercial activity is, is all quite right in conditional use. For the most part, dining establishments are conditional use in the CR district, including restaurants, coffee shops, and cafes. Now, I'm, I'm proposing that my determination is that this is not necessarily a dining establishment up to that level of scale, precisely because it's for a number of reasons, it's not new construction, it's the reuse of a build, readaptation of a building that was designed to be residential. And, and as such, configuration and footprint of the building is more limiting than a new construction strictly commercial. Because either you take a look at what a coffee house is, you can have a coffee house that's eight hundred square feet, or you can have a corporate, own corporate, coffee house, it's probably three or four thousand square feet. Size doesn't matter, what use does.
What is a tea room?
A tea room is a, and the applicant is here, a tea, or potential applicant, a tea room is a small establishment where, for limited hours and limited menu is served, primarily for the purpose of tea and light theater. While it would be required to have a commercial kitchen, commercial food, the activity in the kitchen, as far as the commercial activity would be concerned, would be decided to be less than you might find at a eating and drinking establishment, and more of what you might find, again, as like a bed and breakfast usage. Because the relatively limited footprints are being able for people there. It still contributes three bedrooms. It's, it's also, by way of proximity, if you look at the very last, the very last page, the property in question is 439, so it's just above the five of the fifty-one. Long story, this is a photograph of the, of the zoning map that's up in the building department, because at least it's nice and big, you can read it, so don't ever worry about those numbers. The numbers refer to streets, by way of legend, that's off on the side, but it's that, it's that, right there on the, on the corner, there are feet, of, of, not feet, of Plum and Mason, just above the five, that's the parcel that we're talking about. All the purple that's to the west of it is the C1 district, which allows all the eating and drinking establishments right right. So all the.
It's right next to it.
All, all, the.
In the same block.
The entirety of the four hundred block, except for this parcel and Ste. Michelle's duplex on Plum, is C1. So.
Yeah, it's funny to do that.
And then, and then there's the street, and then the next adjoining property is Town Hall and the Fire Station, which basically serves as a physical barrier before you get to the rest of the CR, which is basically used as residential anyway. So in a sense.
That's the only CR left on that block.
That's the only CR left on that block, it's contiguous to all the C1s. Across the street in the Armor District, you can put all sorts of eating and drinking establishments by right, and Frankly Town Hall and the Fire Station block it from every other residential building in the CR. So it's, it's sort of a differently configured lot, and I can't tell you what the, what the appropriate planning practice in mind was to have one lot facing Mason Avenue, still left the CR, when the rest of the four hundred blocks is.
And my vague consideration for the ones right behind it.
Then active, because those are active, those are active halls. And traditionally have been, even though Frank's own commercial, use residential, they both use residential, they must be.
Are there different sign constraints for a tea room than there are for anything else?
No, that would, that would scare me. I'm driven, yeah.
No, it's fine, it's okay, that's appropriate, that's fine.
You start, you start the.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
Do these things have to comply with ADA laws?
Yeah, and in fact, that's gonna be going to historic for putting out a front ramp. The way Jeff Bray explains to me is, it wasn't all that long ago, for me, longer time residents may remember when there was.
Yeah, when they remember.
When there was a ramp.
Yeah, when they remember.
And that ramp was actually removed by the current owner.
Why does, why does this have to go into the?
What, it has a scoop.
Why is this going to the historic, staying in historic?
It's in the footprint.
It's still in historic.
Yeah, but it's in the footprint.
When did they change that?
We've never.
It's still that one.
Yeah, 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 the houses on Peach Street were never considered, on the north side, never considered historic impact.
It's, it's considered as a non-contributing.
Yeah, exactly, not in that.
But it is.
But it's in the footprint.
The law's the law, the law. I know. Yeah, see, it's nineteen seventies all over that stuff.
Well, right, that, that house couldn't be built anymore, so.
Okay, Larry, what do we want to do with this?
Um, either tell me, tell me my determination is correct or incorrect. If it's incorrect, because remember, we did amend, any, well, town, town council amended this commission and entertained that discussion a year ago, about the determination of the, of the zoning administrator not no longer being sort of executive fiat, but rather with the consent of this commission.
Well, in my opinion, your determinations.
Correct.
Yeah, I agree with that, too, because even if you look at this, though, compared to the houses behind it, it's so far away.
I have a couple of questions, Paul. One question, I might have missed it, but does it say how many guests it will be holding or maximum?
Uh, the, 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 the potential applicant is here, potential owner and operators here, we've talked about that, and I believe the number, and they can also speak to the hours of operation that they have in mind, would be, would not to exceed, I believe, fifteen, twenty. And the, the Fire Marshal, again, Jeff, says that that would be appropriate for the number of people at that building that commercial use could occupy, also given the ingress and egress. There's a fact, you know, the house has a back door that leads onto the very small little backyard garden area, that again, is not ADA compliant, right now, everything has got these scoops or concrete stairs, but that would have to be amended to be able to get people in and out.
With the back door, back, and then it's have to be ADA compliant also, or just the front?
Uh, the front, I know, would have to, I don't know, I don't know the answer to that one.
You get the front and the bathrooms.
The bathrooms would have to be contributed as well, the bathroom is small, it's centered in the middle of the house, fully unharmed, the architect, I know, was working on, on, on how to answer that.
And I'm sure that if he did, he has seen the back, it would be part of, it has to, I mean, if it's by law, it'll have to be. In, in, around, you're talking windows, all sorts of, you know, windows have to be a specific size.
It's a house.
It is a house.
Right, and it has to be, has to be retrofigured enough to become a, a public accommodation for a, for a house.
Yeah, the Fire Marshal, this is based on bathroom, and then spread footage, is determined what the, the occupancy permit would be.
Right, and not all the rooms are also projected to be used as, as dining either. It would basically be what's, what's front living room, and portions of two of the bedrooms, which are, again, upsize, if you would think of it, not of a dining hall, but of a normal-sized residential bedroom, nine by twelve, ten or eleven by twelve.
Is that basically all the rooms that Frank said?
Correct.
Okay, I'm good.
Because there's a master bedroom that faces the backyard, that's also where the bathroom is, I think the bathroom's in the middle, and I know that that has to be reconfigured to be able to be used for public accommodation.
Do you have a minute, Paul?
And what would be, when would this be open? I mean, what hours would we?
We're having twelve to five, three days a week, initially, so, place, set, whatever we, unified. Special, you know, reservations can make, a special party outside of that, or, like on Sunday afternoon or something.
Any other questions?
I think it's a grand idea.
Yeah.
That's good. But I think it's a super.
Somebody want to make a motion?
What is it we want to make a motion for, to, we support the planning?
Yeah, I support the determination that it's.
Agree with your determination.
That the tea room.
Make a motion that we agree with the planning's determination, that this, that it don't get used for.
All in favor? All right, any opposed? So carry it.
So they send it to the town council?
Not, not active.
That happens.
All right, good.
Better, you better.
Okay. Last item, new business. Reschedule next month's meeting. I'm not here.
You're not here, are you?
Well, maybe. Well, I, I'm here, but I'm not gonna be available, let's put it that way, because I'll be otherwise occupied during the ceremony.
When are we, we're talking, we're scheduled to?
I would think the third and Monday, right, which is our typical backup day.
Third Monday?
Another it is?
Which is after, which is at the, I'm looking right now. That'll be July eighteen.
Right.
I don't think you're here. Yeah, I'm sure.
Well, you won't be here the eighteen.
I won't be here the eighteen.
Okay. It's almost been a forum, that's what we're.
You need to make sure we're little.
Yeah, I should be here. I said the eighteen, so it's there, it's a lot, yeah, maybe.
Yes, exactly.
I agree.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I just wanna make sure, if I'm not gonna be here, we've got a forum.
Do I have a motion to change next month's meeting date?
So, it's currently scheduled for July fifth.
July fifth.
July fifth, until the eighteen. If everybody else is tomorrow.
Gonna go to July fourth, and then go on back to work, probably is our.
We need a notification, we have to change the planning commission meeting to July fifteenth.
That's Monday, yes.
Yeah.
It's the typical backup day for planning commission, the third Monday, as opposed to the first two.
I think we've used that day probably twice in the last four years.
We did it recently.
We did it last month, last month, yeah.
Right, right. No, we had the same one with the.
You did it once before, too.
We did it once before with the girlfriend, and I put the, it didn't mean the.
Comp plan?
Yeah.
Comp plan was the fourth Monday, it's with hers, because the third Monday's sort of gets the day of peace.
Yeah, but we did use it twice, but, that's fine. I'm fine. Let's do it.
Okay. Did anybody second it? Did you second it?
I say, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So carry it. Any announcements?
We hit a motion. Move it, we heard.
I say mine. Oh, come on.
Sure.